It's over. We make the secretary and the new planner. So yeah, I think we should.
The planner will be here tonight.
Say that again?
The planner will not be here tonight.
Okay.
Still, we should appoint a planner, I think, before we start the meeting.
Yeah.
Maxine, this is Mark. Do you hear me?
I hear you, Mark.
Do you see me?
I'll see you, Mark.
No, no. Yeah, I do see Mark.
Okay.
He's the bottom left square there.
Well, it all depends on yours.
As handsome as everybody's a little different, but I see Paula because like the Partridge Family, you know, it's everybody's got a cubicle here, you know.
Did you see me?
Margaret, hi.
Did you get a parking spot?
I'm actually in the old AMP parking lot.
The old AMP? Okay.
I didn't make it that far, so.
Okay.
Everybody like my Corona beard?
I don't too. I don't.
Allison, can you unmute? Okay, I'm gonna read you the. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people and that you will faithfully and partially and just to perform all the duties as a member of the Aberdeen Township Planning Board as alternate number two for two years' term commencing immediately and expiring on December 31st, 2021 according to the best of your ability. What do you have to say?
I do.
Okay, you're in.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome, Allison.
Thank you, Allison.
It's a good group. You'll like it, Allison. This is a good group and fun group, too.
Yes, it is.
Hello.
Hello, Maxine.
Okay, according to our host, Paula, do you see everybody on that we could start? Before, before, are we recording? Are we recording yet?
Yes.
We are recording. Okay, so.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order then.
That's it.
And let's pledge allegiance to the flag. Do you have a flag?
Well, we have the flag kind of. Oh, there it is right behind Maxine.
Hi, Maxine. Thank you. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Stand, okay.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Invisible with liberty. Thank you, everyone. A moment of silence. Thank you. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was sent to the appropriate newspapers on September 4th, 2020. Maxine, please call them all.
Mayor Tagovini?
Here.
Mr. Saris. Mr. Alafuzio. Mr. Lundberg?
Here.
Mr. Mirabelle? Councilwoman Montone?
Here.
Mr. Veneer?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Shenton?
Here.
Mr. Vinci? Mrs. McLeod?
Mr. Mirabelle's here.
I see you now. Okay, great. We're going to go to item on the agenda. I believe it's Resolution. P4?
P4.
Okay, appointing an assistant to the secretary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board members. I'd like to nominate for Assistant Secretary to the Planning Board, Ms. Paula Ramsey.
Is there a second?
A second.
One second.
Mr. Mirabelle.
Pedro.
Pedro, okay.
Mayor Tagovini?
Yes.
Mr. Kesaris? Mr. Alafuzio? Sandra, you have to unmute.
A couple of you are having unmuted. Allison, you're still. That's better. Bruce, you're unmuted.
Pedro, you also. Mr. Lundberg?
Yeah, I already say yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Montone?
Yes.
Mr. Veneer?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. McLeod? Something's not coming through.
Okay. Resolution P6 is the next item on the agenda, appointment of planner. Margaret?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and fellow Planning Board members. I'd like to. Should I appoint or nominate first, Remington Vernick? Am I appointing or am I nominating?
You're appointing.
Okay, I would like to appoint Remington Vernick as the planner for the calendar year. It says 2020. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Thank you.
Is he on the meeting right now?
No, he's not here tonight.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
The mayor, I believe.
Fred? Mayor Tagovini?
Yes.
Mr. Kesaris? Mr. Lundberg?
Yes.
Mr. Mirabelle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montone?
Yes.
Mr. Veneer?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. McLeod?
All right. Next item was we're changing the meeting time to start at 6:30 PM. And I would take it we're also changing the ending time an hour earlier. Would that be correct, Mike?
Is that just for as long as we're doing it by remote?
I make a motion to accept.
I second.
Yeah, the answer to the attorney is yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, but I believe it's appropriate to move the ending time up also so that we.
Hold on one second. Why is between flashing?
Log, I'm on two. I don't know if you can hear me.
I can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Saris? Mr. Alafuzio?
Here.
Mr. Lundberg?
Yes.
Mr. Mirabelle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montone?
Yes.
Mr. Veneer?
Definitely.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. McLeod?
Okay, now, we're going to, we have minutes for August 21st. The organization begins January 20th. My public meeting, January 20th, April 15th of this year. Pedro, you were at all the meetings. Do you want to accept the minutes?
Yes, I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Wait, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're up to new business one, SP 19504. That's CPC Behavioral Health to amend their site plan to include five. Mr. Key, you're here for that?
Yes.
Louis Granato appearing on behalf of the applicant.
I see. Okay, thank you. Mr. Granato.
And Richard Gonzalez is also here as the representative from the app.
All right. So go ahead. Okay, do you want to present your case?
Yes. First, this is an application by CPC Behavioral Health Care Incorporated, located on Route 34 in Aberdeen. The application is to amend its site plan to add five more parking spaces to the property. Richard Gonzalez, who's the representative from CPC. And he's here on the Zoom. Do you want to have him sworn in?
Who are we swearing in?
Mr. Richard Gonzalez.
Oh, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez, would you raise your right hand? Can I see him? Do I see him? Is he here? There he is. Okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Tell us who you are. You're, no, you're right. I believe that you're an engineer licensed.
No, no. No, Mike. He's the representative from CPC Behavioral. Mr. Gonzalez, would you state your name and your position with CPC?
My name is Richard Gonzalez. I'm the Director of Facilities for the Agency.
Mr. Gonzalez, how long have you been employed by CPC?
Over 20 years.
And how long have you been familiar with the site at Route 34 in Aberdeen?
Since its inception was, I believe, 1997 we've had the building.
And are you familiar with the property?
Yes.
What is the activity at CPC Behavioral?
It's kind of an outpatient and a new federal program called the CCBHC. We have a kind of a mixed bag. There's therapy there, mental therapy, and then also there is like a supported employment program and as well as some medication distribution, just mild.
And there's staff there also?
Correct.
Approximately how many members of the staff are located at the property?
I would say on a given day, anywhere from 40 to 50.
And what are the hours of operation?
From 8:30 or 9:00 AM, sometimes as far as 8 o'clock at night on three nights a week.
The other nights of the week?
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM? What is the application for?
Why? Oh, to increase just the parking space. We right now rent spots from the place next door and they told us as of sometime last year that we can only use them up until 3:00 PM, which kind of creates a problem with our employees as well as some of our consumers come there. They are challenged with movement. So what they end up doing is parking across the street sometimes or even, you know, parking on the neighboring street, Oxford, which I'm sure that the neighbors don't care for. So if we can get just those six more spots, that would help greatly just to get both employee and some of our consumers into the lot for services.
Maxine, do all the members have a copy of the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, the site plan, can we have that marked, Mike?
Yeah, just you have it marked for today's date is A1.
A1, okay.
We, could that somehow be shown on our screen? For any members of the public?
Somebody has the ability to do that, and I believe Bob Key is doing that right.
Okay, that's all right.
And if you look at the diagram that's on the screen, the Route 34 is on the right side, upper right-hand corner. The facility itself is a two-story building on the lower left-hand corner at hash marks. And the applicant is asking for the addition of six spaces where it is dotted. Does everyone see that?
Yes.
That would be on the corner of Oxford and Route 34 on the applicant's property. I have no further questions from Mr. Gonzalez.
All the parking spaces are in the front of the building?
Yes.
Where are these, the spots that you rent?
They're on the neighboring property on 34. It's a dance studio, I believe.
There's a hand that's on the screen that's pointing.
I see it.
So is there an entrance from there to your property?
No, we've been walking over the grass and, you know, walking on 34, too, which is another reason why, you know, we would need the spaces.
Is that where your patients or the people who need the care have to park?
We try to leave as much spaces for our consumers, but sometimes it doesn't happen. And reluctantly, they go over there and then walk over.
What's there right now where you want to put those six spaces? Is there anything there?
I'd like to say grass, but a lot of it's crabgrass, but it's all grass.
No trees?
No, we have some landscaping there.
Okay.
How many parking spaces are there existing?
Perhaps Bob Key can answer that question?
Morning. Do you want to square me in at all or?
Mike, will you square in? Bob Key, please.
Yes. Want to raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, tell us how many spaces there are there.
You want his qualifications for the record, Michael?
Sure.
Mr. Key, would you state your name and your profession is?
I'm licensed by the state of New Jersey as an engineer.
Engineer, land surveyor, planner.
Okay, fine. You will accept.
I used to be your board's engineer at one time.
He has experience with the board.
Mr. Key, tell us how many spaces there are.
There's 40 existing. And with the additional ones, obviously, it's going to be 46. I do have pictures that were taken. If anybody has questions on the site itself, I can bring those up if anybody's not that familiar.
Don't make it more complicated.
Okay.
This is about spaces.
Mr. Key, have you had the opportunity to review the report from CME?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay, does the board members have a copy of that report?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay, what's the date of the report, Mr. Key?
January 15th, 2020.
Now, would you address the concerns that Mr. Abrosio raises in his letter?
I had a hard time hearing that.
I'm sorry. Would you address the concerns that were raised, the issues that were raised in the CME letter?
Can I interrupt for a minute? The letter I'm looking at is dated March 5th, 2020.
Mine, too.
Mine is March 5th, 2020.
The last letter is March 5th. March 5th, 2020. Bob, do you have that one?
No.
It was sent to Mr. Granata.
I don't have it either.
Paula, can you put it up on the screen? It was sent to you back in March.
I'm looking through what I have and I don't see it.
Okay.
Oh, I like that.
It was the one just before our meetings were canceled.
And you put it up? You're putting it up on the screen?
Yes, he's bringing it up.
There it is. That's March 5th. There we go.
Yeah, I'm trying to compare it to the January 15th.
Scroll one more thing out. The planning and zoning, we know.
I'm gonna, I'm at my office. I'm gonna print it out right now. Give me a minute, please.
It's the same, it's the same one as January 15th, isn't it? It looks the same.
It is. Page one looked the same.
Yes, page two looks the same.
Yeah.
Go back up. Go back up. That's the main page. That's what they're looking for.
Yeah, and that's the same as on the January 15th letter.
Yes. He must have just reissued the same date.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Do we have a lighting plan that he's asking for?
I'm sorry, Michael. I didn't hear what you said.
Is there a change at all to the lighting? Look at number 2.5.
Mr. Key, would you address the lighting issue?
Well, if we want to, we want to take one of them in number two.
You don't have to do them all. Let's, yeah.
Okay. The lighting is also supplemented from the on-site to a street light on the pole directly in front on Route 34. We've been out there both day and night. It appears that is adequate lighting in accordance with the minimum standards of the ordinance. We have not done testing of the light to get the exact quantity, but we feel at the present time and through personal experience of being on-site, we feel the lighting that's there is more than adequate to the ordinary requirements.
Maybe you ought to go down. Look, there's six items. Why don't you just comment on each one? DOT, have you submitted it to DOT?
No, we have not done that to date. We believe we're going to be exempt because we're not really increasing the usage on the property. We're not changing the access points. We're not changing traffic circulation.
So there'll be a condition in any resolution that you do that.
We could apply. We'll apply if necessary, obviously. Yes, sir.
There would have to be a letter from the DOT that they are not interested?
That's correct.
I don't know if we could get them to do that within the next couple of years known as DOT. However, we will communicate with them and be in correspondence with Anthony and/or Maxine to let them know what's going on.
Have you revised the plans as to the draft file 2.2?
This letter, Bob, this letter is basically the same as the one before, the January one.
Right. Thank you, Maxine. We made our comparison.
I just compared line for line.
Thank you. We didn't have time from when we received the copy of this letter to do that revision, but it's dimension on there and I can meet and add the additional dimensions that Anthony is looking for.
Okay.
You know, what about the utility company? And that pole, is that the same pole that the light is on that you were discussing?
Yes, yes. It's a very heavily adorned pole. A lot of lines on it and to remove it, Mike Vance is running key engineering by that time.
Just the guide wire that goes.
Guide wire. The guide wire we have shown on the plan. If you, give me a second. I guess it come off the letter. You'll let it down, Maxine, please? Thank you. Here out in the front, if you see where it says the utility pole, that's the exact pole, the exact location, and that already has a light fixture on it. And pulling back is a guide wire. It goes into the parking, it's a grassed area now, but the proposed parking area. If you can see, we had proposed to put a stripings around the guide wire that's there and make it obvious for any traffic that's in there. It is just a parking. It's not a lot of maneuvering going on. And we had proposed to believe it. The utility pole cannot stay there and just remove that guide wire.
How high is the lowest point on the guide wire?
Pardon?
How high is the lowest point on the guide wire?
It touches the ground.
It touches the ground in the grassed area now or in the new paved area. Bring up the picture. If you'll be with me one second.
So is it possible for somebody parking there to hit that guy where?
Yes.
Yes.
At the present time, yes. We've not put protection around it. We just, we're going to stripe it to notify people pulling into the parking spaces that it was there. We do have several different alternatives to protect the guide wire and still leave it there. The one I like the best is we would put a small two-foot island, but put curbing around it so it's a distinct reserved area and it points out what the people trying to pull in and out of the spots.
Might you put balusters there also?
Pardon me, I didn't get that.
Could you put balusters there also to, that are?
Sure, sure. Right inside the, inside of the little island. It's gonna be very small, just two foot wide. So yes, we could put balusters in to protect it also.
Is there a reason why that wire cannot be underground?
That's.
It's a structural, it's a structural member. It's not a.
It's not electric. It holds the pole from tipping over the road.
Yep, got you. Yep.
If you look further on down the line in that photograph, you can see some of the other poles are, you know, not exactly straight. That maintains it.
The light hanging off of the pole, it has to be balanced by those wires, basically.
Yep, yep.
There's a lot of wires up there, too. It's a lot of string on that pole.
But the new parking doesn't obstruct that or, you know, that's why you're moving it or you need to move it?
No, we, I'm proposing not to move it. There's no way that that pole can stay there without having a back support, which is the guide wire. What we're trying to do is make it safer in amongst the new facilities, the new parking facilities. There's enough room in there. It's a two-foot strip that we had proposed in there. And just leaving pavement right up to it, I'm proposing right now to add small island of concrete curbing and put, as we've recommended, balusters within that little island.
So let me ask you a question. On the parking spots themselves, if, let's say, an SUV or a large car parks in the spots, are they going to be opening doors if they're right near the guide wire?
Well, we've got nine-foot wide parking stalls there and there's an extra two foot on that one particular side. And when the the guide wire itself enters the ground right up this point here. So if anybody pulling head into the parking space, they would have a full range of opening the door without being obstructed by the guide wire.
Front and back? Of the vehicle?
Yes. Right where the hand is. That's where it enters the ground. Okay, so from there all the way back to the beginning of the new parking spot is open and free, just like every other parking spot that's in there.
Mr. Key, where it enters the ground, would that be forward of where a car tire would park? Or in that area?
Approximately where the tire would be, yes.
Okay.
Your front bumper and stuff would be, you know, way before that.
Bob, it's Anthony. Those parking spaces, those parking spaces would be the exact same size as any other parking space with a parking lot, correct?
I can't understand them.
Are the parking spaces the same size?
The parking spaces are all nine by 18.
Is the rest of the parking spaces on the lot?
Yes, they're all the same size.
Chairman, just the point being is that even with that two-foot curved area to protect the guide wire, you would still have a full nine by eight parking space?
Absolutely, yes. And we'd be opening the door on the car. It doesn't, it won't interfere with the guide wire. It's a very steep angle on that guide wire.
Anthony, do you know if we're infringing on any distance with the utility company with that guideline?
No, you're not. The applicant's still within his property and the utility pole is outside on the DOT right away.
Thank you, Anthony.
Any other questions about the number three? So we'll move on to paragraph number 2.4, please.
Well, we're waiting to, it said more of a statement, that handicap parking calculation should be reviewed by the township construction code officer.
Number five? You've already addressed that previously.
Yes, I think I answered that before, we feel it's adequate if Anthony wants, we'll do some meter readings, but in addition to the onsite lights that are on a private property, the same utility pole that we were talking about as could have been seen in the other photograph, there's a large street light out on Route 34 which lights up that whole general corner of property in question.
Number six?
I have a quick question there though, if that light was to be out for whatever reason, because I'm looking at where Lot 7 seems to be, right? Is there adequate lighting from the building then for that? More, more, more to the left where Lot 7 is, closer to the building. So the first parking, the first parking area there, since people are coming out, you know, late at night, potentially seven, eight o'clock, if the light is out in the front, for whatever reason, would there be enough lighting? Would one, would at least one light there, that corner somewhere, not be adequate?
There's a.
I could add, the building has soft light lights all along the front and they are below the soffit, so that brightens out the sidewalk and the whole front parking area. And then we have brand-new LEDs throughout the entire lot.
Right, I'm trying to point them out to you, they're indicated on the plan, like a little bursted sunlight, sunshine thing. And that was designed to accommodate the entire parking area.
Thank you. We done that yet? And number six was the only one that was still open.
I haven't had to talk to Anthony about this, but the headlights that are shining onto the state highway are not in direct conflict with somebody driving a car, it's like stopping in a stop street or a traffic light. We don't feel as dangerous in any way, shape or form of what we have proposed. There presently exists in the front a decorative wall and the sign, the sign that we're going to be relocating. All of the landscaping in that particular section is not being touched. Like every other commercial property, we want everything to be seen from the highway as much as possible. And we did not propose any additional landscaping along the highway for any type of buffering whatsoever.
Can you put the picture back up of the property?
Sure. See, see the wall I was talking about? That's all to remain. That's not going to be, the only thing that's going to be happening right there in the corner is that existing sign is going to be relocated about five feet further north to get it to the new parking area.
That sign illuminated at night?
Yes.
It's internal illumination, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
It's internally lit, the sign?
Yes.
Yes. I have a question about the grading on that, on that area. It is considerably higher, I mean, it shows in the picture where that guy wire comes into the ground. It's approximately, my guess is eighteen inches higher than the existing lot. How are you going to grade that? Are you going down?
We're going to berm up just the front landscaped area as such, the rest of it's going to be paved and similar to the driveway that you see going out, the way we're going to come back within the site itself.
But it's an elevated area, it's elevated at least eighteen inches above the rest of the parking lot.
We're going, we're going to re-pave the area, it's going to be higher than minimum slope on the, on the new pavement. And we feel that doing it in there is adequate and or can be adjusted to grade with the guide wire.
Mr. King, is the grade of the parking space is going to be the same as the grade for the rest of the parking lot?
Well, we're tying into the existing parking lot where the existing curb is, that's going to be removed.
Then cut in?
Pardon?
And the dirt there is going to be removed and brought down to the level of parking space, of parking lot?
Yes, sir, yes, we're going to match into the existing pavement edge along the existing curb that's there and it'll grade up towards Route 34 so the drainage comes back into the site.
Are you saying grade up or are you saying grade two toward?
It's going to start off with the existing pavement in the parking lot, right next to the curb, and it's going, the grade is going to go upgrade going towards Route 34 to contain all the drainage onsite.
The parking is going to be on a slope?
Yes.
So if there's a heavy rain followed by a frost, is there going to be any puddling on the existing pavement right now?
No, sir.
Where's the water going to go, I guess that's the question.
Where it goes at the present time. The drainage pattern doesn't change whatsoever. The grassed area is sloped down towards the existing parking lot. The grade coming in off of Route 34 comes in through the existing driveway. It meets the existing pavement and is directed towards some inlets onsite.
Thank you, well, the drainage will change a little though, because you're changing your impervious cover, you're increasing impervious cover, so I think we're just asking that is the drainage that you currently have sufficient for the, for the added impervious?
The amount of increased runoff from the new six parking spaces is very minuscule.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Are you just keeping the same kind of curve, you're just basically pushing it forward?
I didn't understand the question, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Bob, Bob, can you bring up the plan, the site plan again, one more time?
Sure.
When you're talking, when your picture's not up there, identify who you are because we're, it has to be recorded and we're not going to know who's talking, so I should say Mike Lexte when I'm talking now.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Mike, it's the board, it's the board engineer, Anthony. Bob, if you can just point out, so I can maybe explain to the board that you're, you're going to be curbing the entire area.
Yes.
The curb is going to be between four and six inches high, so you're eliminating about six inches of that grading right off the bat with a curb face. And then the other twelve inches will be gradually sloped within the lawn area.
Yes.
The parking lot is going to be graded in such a way where the new curb line for the front end of the parking lot is going to be at the high point and all the water is going to slope towards the existing parking lot and go basically where it goes now. So I.
Showing the inlet. Existing inlet out there.
Right, but essentially, but essentially the grading's going to be, you know, all the, all the grading for those six new spots are going towards the existing parking lot. And at that point, it'll, the existing great grading will take it where it goes now.
Exactly.
To answer, to answer Ms. McLeod's question about the impervious, it doesn't meet the actual threshold for DEP or the town's standards for impervious. So they are exempt from that standard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
All right, near, what is the square footage that's of increased impervious, even though it doesn't fall under any type of ordinance, just for knowledge's sake?
Yes, I can.
18162 times six. Nine hundred and seventy-two square feet.
All right, it's the chairman, William Shenton. I have a question about the parking in the front. A variance is required for parking in front of the building. Parking, the majority of it is supposed to be in the rear of the building, but due to the situation of the building, there is no room for parking in the front. But you are increasing the amount of parking in the front, so do you need a variance?
They do, they're increasing, yeah, they'll give a variance for that.
There are existing, three existing sites, oh, excuse me, there's five existing sites right there that are already lining up, we're duplicating on either side of the entrance, the parking in the front, yes.
So is there going to be testimony about that of some sort for the record? We didn't feel that.
Bill, I think we can pretty much say that it's, the increase to an existing situation that there is no parking, therefore there's a hardship, they can't put parking in the rear.
That's, I, I, fine, I agree.
That's all, yeah.
I, they can't, I mean, I almost said that when I asked the question. Another question I have is our ordinance requires sidewalks. There is no sidewalk there. I don't know when this was approved, but we require sidewalks and there is a sidewalk on Oxford.
Yes, sir.
Ends there, and there are sidewalks on the other side of Oxford on 34. So what's the situation there?
The approval goes back to 1973, Bill.
Pardon?
The first approvals for this building go back to 1973.
Well, at this point, I think we get another bite at that apple.
And then the planning board granted a variance for parking in 1978.
Well, I think the sidewalks are required. Grab attention, if you can tell us that. He didn't raise the issue in his report.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, don't forget you're within the DOT right away. Anything that has, anything that happens within the DOT right away, they need approval for.
I see. Oh, I would assume they're going to ask, when they get asked for their approval, that they approve putting a sidewalk in also. Whatever the requirements are by the NJ DOT, we will comply. Excellent. Does anyone else have any questions? Any, are there any members of the public that have questions? Mr. Chairman, someone put a question at the bottom of my screen, I don't know if that was a member or a person from the public. Did you see that, Maxine or anyone else?
I can't, I don't see any questions.
There was before. I guess whoever was asking, the person was satisfied with the testimony.
The question, the question is still there, it's from Allison.
A board member.
There was one visitor that is gone, I don't see.
All right. Is there, are there any other issues at this point?
I was making something else, so I typed.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what was being.
Allison, you're breaking up, I don't know what's the problem.
This is my internet bad.
You're breaking up, you're, you're, I don't know if your battery is low on your computer or what, but.
No, he said the bandwidth is very bad from.
She's got bad internet connection, she said. Is someone else on your internet, because that would slow it down also.
No, you're muted.
Yeah, that's why I typed. I typed my.
I mean, Margaret's breaking up.
I can't, I can't understand.
I, Bill, I think what she's saying is that she typed her, she typed her questions because, because her audio was so bad, she typed them. That's what I heard, yes.
Okay, where can we see them?
It's right, it's right in the chat, you want me to read it to you?
It's on the chat.
Yeah, it says, are you keeping the same curb, just moving it forward? And I just wanted you to confirm the onsite drainage was sufficient, thank you, that's from Allison.
Right, which is, which is why I responded and I answered Allison directly, I believe.
Yeah.
All right, is everybody satisfied at this point?
Yes.
Okay, can we have a.
Yes.
Motion?
Someone propose a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to approve. I second.
Okay.
There are conditions, right?
What are the conditions?
Well, I guess I got to have to see the minutes, but one is we got to deal with that guy wire.
So there'll be an island for the guy wire and something else?
Island for the guy wire and ballisters and ballisters, right.
Okay.
Then you still have, you've got to deal with the.
DOT.
With the state on the highway. And let's see, what else was there?
We're going to do some light testing to submit to Anthony for his review.
Right, well, that would generally be that he would have to comply with the letter of March.
Right, absolutely.
That would be included in there.
But we just asked, I just asked for that letter that he's going to submit for the DOT to include a request to install sidewalks.
All right, and how do you want that word, you're saying when it deals with the highway, include a request to install sidewalks?
Correct, okay. Mr. Chairman, would it be that it would be a decision by the state rather than saying that it has to be a sidewalk? Our ordinance requires sidewalks and this issue has come up in the past. Somewhere on 34, we got to start, I mean, we've started and they have put sidewalks on 34 where they didn't exist before, but it's, the sidewalk ends on the other side of Oxford on 34. And then there's just grass in front of the site. And if at all possible, our plan says that we should encourage sidewalks. So I, my feeling, I don't know whether, Margaret, whether you agree with adding that to your, that they actually request it?
You know, to be honest with you, Bill, are there sidewalks leading from it and leading to it? Will that be the only stretch of sidewalk?
No, there's sidewalks on the other side, Oxford and on, along Oxford and on 34 toward the east. Which is away from the property. Well, that's on the other side of Oxford, it's the next property. Where the dental office is.
Right.
That has sidewalks.
But not on the same side of the street, right, Bill?
There is a sidewalk on the same side of the street. And on the same side of the street along Oxford, there's a sidewalk.
Correct.
Up to the corner.
Yeah.
This would put the sidewalk from Oxford to the end of that property.
Yeah, and I think there's a sidewalk in front of that, oh, right before the pandemic, we approved the, someone putting up a brand-new front, right, Maxine, and I think there's a sidewalk there now, right? We, we approved a few retail stores on Route 34. I think there's a sidewalk in front of his property.
Mr.. Where are you talking about, the car place?
I'm sorry?
Where are you talking about, Fred?
Well, it's the old Wicker Training Building.
Right, AFC.
No, no, it was, it's the brand.
Sammy.
Sammy, right.
Yes.
We did, we put a sidewalk there.
I think there was a sidewalk there already.
Yeah, well, there's a sidewalk there, but I don't think there's a sidewalk yet in front of the 7-Eleven and the veterinarian.
There is not a sidewalk there, you're right.
No.
Nor is there a sidewalk by the dance studio.
Right.
But you got to, you.
Look, if we can get. Look, if we can get a sidewalk there, that would be great.
I think so.
Yeah, I think you agree with the councilwoman, yeah. And the chairman.
Mr. Gonzalez, you consent to making an application to the DOT for a sidewalk?
Yeah, I mean, it would help our clients as well and anybody, you know, just, it's just a one big strip there that, you know, people walk on the street on Route 34. I mean, I'm talking to a population, not even our staff or.
Okay, so that's, that's the last condition, is the sidewalk.
Okay.
Corrected, we had a second, didn't we, yes, so it's a vote.
Hey, I guess we voice vote this, no?
So Margaret made a motion and Robin second?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Tagovini?
Mr. Key?
What?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to apply for it if the state does not grant the permit. Does that null and void our approval?
No.
Absolutely.
So if the state doesn't allow us to put it in, then.
You really gotta do it though, you can't pretend.
Your engineer will get a copy of the application.
Okay, right.
Thank you.
Subject to approval by the state for the installation of the sidewalk.
Right.
All right, Maxine, go ahead.
Okay, Mayor Tagovini?
Yes.
Ms. Chrisares? Mr. Arpa Lusju?
Yes.
Mr. Wenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Mirabelle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montone?
Yes.
Mr. Reineer?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Shenton?
Yes.
Ms. McCloud?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Our next public meeting is October 21st. Maxine?
The resolution will be the only thing as of this moment.
As of this moment, then fine.
The resolution for tonight's application.
Pardon?
The resolution that pertains to what happened tonight, is that what she said?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other items of business? No? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. And I will second.
All in favor, aye.
All right.
All right.
Have a great night.
Thank you, Paul.
Have a good night.
Good night.